Leading to order at six o'clock.
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of this country, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Chuck.
Here.
Lisa.
Here.
Jeremiah.
Here.
Tom.
Here.
Tanya.
Here.
Lori.
Here.
Linda, here. All present and accounted for. I need a motion to adopt Mr. Prokaz. Are there any additions to the agenda? I need a motion to approve.
I move, I move to approve the agenda.
I second. Motion by Tom, second by Lori. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion here. On the consent agenda, anybody need to pull anything off of the consent agenda? I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda.
All right.
Second.
Jeremiah? Any discussion?
Madam Chair, if I could just take a couple of seconds to note within the consent agenda, the memorandum's understanding with the EA regarding the coaching positions and acknowledging those so that we're ready to go with those in the fall. The point four or point five seniority list for the teachers is enclosed for your review and obviously for our approval and it serves as a basis for us in terms of the district looking at a list of licenses and then where the folks fall in terms of seniority. And then also just to point out, this is something you're going to have to remember for next fall is item eight, which would be the agreement of the Long Prairie Hockey Association. This is what we did was we had an expired agreement with them, so we put together a one-year deal with the hockey association, which was in your packet. So I don't know if the district has typically worked with three-year arrangements with that organization, but that's out there. So just remember that next year, as the fall rolls around, you're going to want to engage them again for another renewal. And that's all.
Sounds wonderful. Any further discussion on consent? Then I need to call the, call the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion here. Then we're down to reports, correspondence, and guests. We have a student rep over there. Please stand and speak forever. This is Abigail.
So I'm just talking about snow days. We have snow days next week. Coronation is on Monday and activity day is on Friday. And for the activities, there's bowling, fishing, and skiing, and then on-campus activities as well. And then we have activities throughout the week, like dress-up days and activities after we have class.
When is coronation?
Coronation is Monday during school.
Any other questions for student rep? Very good. Thank you very much. Come again. I have one guest signed up. Anybody else? Otherwise, we will see Ms. Roos.
Hello. I am the LPGE Girls Club Director and also the curriculum writer for our program. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of information as we are ready to launch our next season, next Tuesday. And Girls Club is for girls in grades three through six. As you can see here, we run the program through our 21st century after-school program. And students who are also in bolt can be in Girls Club as well. It's free of charge for our students. It's designed to help young girls grow into their unique selves. And we work on confidence, leadership skills, self-esteem, awareness, courage, and kindness. And Girls Club means confidently leading with unique brilliance. So the purpose of it is to just help these young ladies at that age learn that they're special, no matter who they are, and we help them move forward with that. Now, we meet for 90 minutes on Tuesdays, so next Tuesday will be our first meeting, three o'clock to 4:30. And they participate in learning activities. We do movement. Their favorite thing is to run the hallways of the school. So if you see us running the hallways, you'll know it's part of Girls Club. It's a little perk that they get to do because otherwise they walk on a certain side, right? We also do a service learning project every season, so we've made cards for the nursing home and for assisted living. And we're always open to ideas because we like to keep connected with the community as well. I am very grateful for all of the mentors that I've had in the past. So different adult, adults come in and they volunteer to mentor with these girls. Jasmine Ecker has been with the program since the beginning, so I just want to give her a very big thank you. She's helping again this year. And on the bottom of your page, American Heritage National Bank allows one of their employees, Tara Stanek, to come over during her workday, and she's able to come over and help with Girls Club. So I'm just very grateful for the bank that they allow her to come and be a mentor to these girls. We're always looking for mentors and we're also continuing to sign up girls. So if you know of anyone who'd like to participate, let me know. Do you have any questions?
Are you full for this year?
No. Not yet.
Yeah.
Usually it takes about a week after launch, then people say, oh, wait, that's started. And then it'll start to get full. We do occasionally get full because my, I operated out of my classroom and it's only, you know, we're dealing with a size issue there, so. Yeah, so we still have room. Any other questions?
Do you run from February to?
We run 12 weeks typically. It depends on the calendar. So this year, we're running from February 4 to April 15. So it'll be the Tuesday right before Easter will be when we're done. And it'll be every Tuesday. Yes.
Thank you very much.
Great question. Thank you. Thanks.
Absolutely. Okay, program report, the activities report.
Should there be a basket?
I don't see her basking. Any questions that somebody else might be able to answer for you? Okay, that's the activities report. You can see the numbers for winter sports are in there. We had a resignation, all that good stuff. Big community ed. Any questions for Mr. Brad? Any 21st century stuff, federal programs? I want to thank you, Mr. Evenson, for being on top of all that federal stuff. Good luck with new administration. Technology. Mitchell's up here. Mitchell, anybody have something for Mitchell? We should be broadcasting live as we speak, so. There is that going on. Principals. Must have a question for one of those two. We have generous donors for winter clothing. Mrs. Seviula, I assume that's elementary kids?
It's actually both buildings, but yes, we need for both. I just gave out a code for high school students last week on Friday, so yeah, we try to cover whichever kids walk in our doors and.
Yeah, we've had two donations, two bulk donations, so we went and purchased a rack from Amazon, just a whole dollar cost, but they tend to go through for whatever doesn't go recycle out to go to the bins in town here, so.
Tis good. I love to read month coming up. Mrs. Seviula, what do you got to say?
So I gave you an updated calendar. Shout out to Beth Gustafson, who created the calendar. She's part of the I love to read month team. And I had the wrong theme, the wrong name of the theme on my board report. So we have a lot of things going on starting this Friday. We'll do the kickoff and then we get started right away at the beginning of February and end with our breakfast and books, which is always the highlight.
Any more questions for the elementary building?
What the slushies, are they just at the high school or are you giving them at the elementary gym?
Nope, just at the elementary school right now.
Some nice spot, okay.
Yep, yep. They were big hit so far, but you know, kids, you know, beats and it comes down, then it's just a big, big.
Yeah, you know Lori. Not at this time.
I was hoping that was.
Alrighty. Any further questions?
I do, Mr. Bruder, I do like the this hundredth, January just hundredth.
Yeah, you know.
I think he's really heading in the very positive direction.
Yeah, and Mr. Hems is really working hard with our PBIS as well as the rest of the staff. I mean, it's really, it's the staff and the students working together. It's, we're taking it seriously. Kids take it seriously. So we're not seeing what we've seen in the past. Coincidentally, we have our final graduation for PBIS and with the program as we are involved with it in a very close, net package right now, that'll taper off, then we just take over from there. We've got some other ideas that we're pushing forward and that we're going to be doing probably this spring. So it's really worked out really well. Kids really have really participated in it. And it's changed kind of tall enough out of you and then, so it's been a good success. Big thank you to Sam. And I'll tell you why, while I'm there, I know it's a lot of negativity, but I'll tell you what, I worked at a lunch line years about two weeks ago. We were short, so I just worked the lunch line. And you'd be surprised how many numbers of the kids that come through and say thank you. I mean, it shocked me. I didn't expect it. I would say just roughly three quarters of the kids came through, said thank you to the, to the staff, including myself. I was like, I was not expecting that. Of course, that, you know, elicits conversation, so it's always, so these are the things that we're seeing with PBIS. It really makes a big difference. And that's a good thing to the staff. I mean, it's, it's a, it's being purposeful on these things. And it's, and you can, you can get lost, you know, because we're so busy that, you know, you got to think we, you know, to do, greet the kids. And we're already doing a lot of these things, so I think it's the purposefulness on these things that just becomes known for us and that changes everything. You go in, I don't have an issue with the bathrooms. You know, I make my rounds at lunchtime to check, we camping out? Nope, not seeing that anymore. So there are changes. So that, that's all the positives. So just let me keep in mind.
Very good. Okay, board. Anybody want to bring anything up? Like we were just someplace last week, so maybe we could give a report out there. Anybody want to say something? Convention was wonderful.
Yeah, very good conference, very educating, excellent speaker. Lots of notes that I took in different sessions. I think it looks like I can remember some of them.
We went to the negotiation session again. Chuck and I, and you went to it too.
Lori, you were organizing. Yes, and that was, that was quite a long.
Yep, very interesting. Speakers were wonderful, two main speakers.
That was a good conference, I thought. I spent at least three different sessions with artificial intelligence. Kind of. It's kind of a hot button right now and I like to try and stay on top of it. But I did meet with Design Tree, Psychologic, Elers, R Wire, so I was busy, but I thought it was a good conference. I did take a quarter, a seven-hour office training tour for the fourth or fifth time, so.
Mine's coming up next week.
Along with things that are happening, the artificial turf samples are over here on the floor for those in the audience and the rest of the board to see, so.
I'd like to give a shout out to the parents. I know it's just parent professional week, so just a huge thank you shout out to them because without them, a lot of stuff in school would probably be hard to get to. Some thanks to all them that are out there.
And I think we should probably acknowledge One Act Play for placing third. So that's really great. Good job.
I didn't, to be clear, I didn't direct.
But I saw your post.
But yes, yes.
And without, without seeing that post, I may not have remembered to bring it up.
I, I appreciate all the thanks in that way. No, we're very proud of, can I, is it, sorry, we're very proud of them. They took, they took third. That's the highest we've taken in quite a while. Just very proud of them.
Good job, Stifler, yes.
Board highlights. So pretend report.
A few things here for this evening. As, as the first item of the, the spreadsheets regarding the enrollments were in your packet as well. The month over month, meaning the month of December, then we were down, we lost three kids. Again, as you see these reports, remember these are kids in seats. Doesn't necessarily equate to ADMs. And although we try and put that column in the spreadsheet as well, those are the numbers that we look at and monitor closely with the idea that the ADMs will come at the end of the year with a little bit more clarity. So again, over the month of December, then we, we were down three kids. Now, it's kind of weird to think about that, that will, as, as these reports are presented by virtue of the enrollment on the first day of the month, then this report is almost old news, right? And, and so Saturday will, will be February 1st already. And so we'll have another report here in just a couple, three, four days. So just keep that in mind as well. And then year over year, showing again, kids in seats, up one over January, January to January. So again, holding steady, I guess, is the verbiage that we always use and that kind of thing, and we want to make sure that we, we do that. So there's your enrollment report. Just a couple of things that's noted on the slide up on the screen.
On enrollment, Doug, and I guess this should then maybe directed during the principal's report, has there been any notice this week with the threats towards immigration of less students in classes or?
Not at the elementary specifically that we can pinpoint.
No, neither at the, it's like, oh, we had that discussion today, but this meeting, you know.
Okay.
But it's a concern that we all have.
Yes.
Want to make that very clear.
Thank you. Looking at then, item two, the, the project updates, obviously we're moving forward. I'm signing contracts relative to the HVAC phase two project at the high school in light of the action that the board took in December. So now those contracts are being finalized and, and ready for, for signatures. So that's what I've been doing here. Obviously, it was last week, actually. The track and turf project committee, the committee's been meeting relative to design. One of the things that, that was a little bit, maybe you, one needs to keep things like equipment in mind as we, as we go forward because that will, that will be some of those sundry items that we don't always keep in mind. We've got the big picture of what the complex might look like, but then, oh yeah, we need to have, we need to talk about netting. We need to talk about gates. We need to talk about, you know, design colors. All these things go into it. It's like, it's like, you know, when you remodel your house and that's kind of the same thing we're into now. So we'll be looking at, at some of those equipment needs as we move forward as part of the project. The good news is, is that the engineer and the, certainly the turf vendor are, still remain very optimistic about, about a mid to late August completion date. So they're very optimistic about that. So that, that's a good thing. And we'll continue to move forward in that regard. Again, the Highway 287 resurfaced in Harmony Park, meeting with, with Candy Bruder at the city. It appears like, you know, that they would be interested in, in us completing the resurfaced project and then dedicating it as a parking lot permanently. So that's, that's some good news from, from the city. So we'll, we'll continue to work forward on, work toward that. And then they are then getting ready then to go offer bid on that project. So we'll, we talked about a change order in the bid specifications with Mindot, and then we'll see how that all progresses out. But I think we also, we've also got an estimate from Bolton Mink, by way of Bolton Mink, I should say. That's our first estimate and maybe we'll ask them to come in and put a bid just to make sure that we're gaining leveraging efficiencies where that's concerned.
Does the city actually own some of that property or does they just have an easement on that property?
They do own, they do own a portion of about a third, a third of the property is owned by the city. And then in answer to your question, there's both. So there is an easement there. There's a drainage easement over there too, that it incorporates the part that they own.
Is there sure taxes on that? I assume so.
I don't know what they do with the tax. Maybe they do.
We're taxing on that right now.
So, yeah.
Ross and Knights, are they willing to partner on those yet?
Correct. They are, yep. They're very happy about that. So, and then, and then finally, I just pulled, went to the second slide regarding the governor's budget. We had, we had conversation about that, looking forward to that at our last meeting. And it was a little different to, to see the proposal. These are some of the highlights that are, that make up the governor's budget. The old adage about any governor is that when the governor puts his or her budget out there, they typically get about 80% of that. That's history. I wonder if that'll be the same this year. So when you take a look at some critical things, obviously the first bullet point talks about the unemployment insurance. He's coming with an additional 30 million to the original outlay, which was, I can't even remember, it was like 135 million to cover statewide. And now he's coming because school districts had said that they, they were concerned that they were going to run out. But that, that pot of money. So we want to be concerned about that one a little bit because if in fact it does run out, then, then there's, there's very much an interest that school districts would pick up that tab as opposed to going to this reimbursement pot that's available. So we want to look at that. And then I want to move down to about, let's see, one, two, three, four, where it talks about the compensatory hold harmless. That's a very, very important stream of revenue for us. And at, at this particular point in time, if things were to stay on track, we would see a significant reduction. So as you talk to legislators, this hold harmless that the governor has put in is a good thing. And it will basically hold us harmless so we wouldn't be hurt by any type of plan that was enacted two years ago by the legislature to change the formula. The cha, the formula, as in any, the formula change would create winners and in this case losers. And in this case, we would see a significant reduction. So we want to watch that during the course of this section. We had told the, some of our lobbyists and lobbyists working with the legislature that please address this immediately as soon as you get into session to correct this formula or at least hold us harmless. Well, you know what we have right now for a legislature, right? And, and so nothing is being done. So we sit in limbo relative to not only our situation where compensatory revenue is concerned, but also the governor's budget. So we'll see how that works. And, and so those were just some, you know, that's a, a broad slide that was given to us last week and just some information relative to the governor's budget. We happy to entertain any questions.
Back up on, what is that literacy aid incentive formula? No longer using MCA's?
Okay, so the literacy aid incentive was a revenue stream, a state aid revenue stream that was created, man, I want to say, I'll say every bit of 10 years ago. And it was, it was built on and the premise of if you did well on the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments, you're, you're on a sliding scale, you got more literacy incentive aid. Reward those districts who performed well. And the converse is true. If you didn't perform well, then you didn't, then you got to base them out. Okay? So then, then enter the REACT. And the literacy incentive aid became one of the three pots that are now funding schools for REACT training and implementation. So that's in there now. So now what they did, what the governor is, what the governor is proposing is, is saying that we're not going to base this, this incentive aid anymore on, on MCA performance. We're going to base it on, on poverty rates in the, in the schools. So. So could hold well from that.
The last two on there, Doug, was eliminate the non-public pupil aid. Does that, with that, do we benefit any with that, with having a kind of school in town here? Are we getting funding from the state for busting those students?
We do.
So that would eliminate that extra funding we get for that.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
And, okay, in, in the non-public world, it's basically an in and an out. So we get the aid and then they, they have, I'd say, there's three areas, transportation books and nursing services. So let's say that they, the non, the non-public school wants to order some textbooks. They order their textbooks and then we get, we pay them, we reimburse them for what we get from the state for that. It may not cover the cost, but we give that back to them. And, and the same holds too for transportation. It's, it's, it's not a thing that we're, generally speaking, it's not a thing that we should be saying we gain a lot because it should be, it's basically just a, we're just a conduit to, to fund them. And their transportation, health services, counseling, textbooks.
And the cooperative school district student support, what is that?
That's it. So basically, Freshwater, Lakes Country, Southwest Central Service Squad, Northwest Service Squad. They all get, let's see, maybe I'll start over. We received last year, I think it was an allocation, all the districts got forty thousand dollars. And in some cases, if you were bigger, more for student support aid. Counselors, social workers, behavioral interventionists, those kinds of things. So what happened then is the service cooperatives received that aid too. And so they received a little bit more. And what they're doing is talking about, if I'm not mistaken, they're redistributing the, more to the schools than the service squads.
Good talk. On to the next, any unfinished business? I don't believe we have any. Mr. Frock?
Okay, then the new business, we have the donations as such. Wonderful, fantastic. Jody's Network of Hope is giving us five thousand dollars for the dollars for scholars. The Felling Family Partnership Fund with Merle and Kathy Felling are giving us a fifty-five ton Edwards ironworker with attachments, three Miller wire feed welders, a one-time saver for a wood shop totaling twenty-five thousand dollars. Felling Family Partnership Fund, Merle and Kathy are giving us miscellaneous tooling supplies worth five thousand dollars for the welding class. Pilick Auto Center LLC, the trailer center is giving three hundred dollars to Activity Day. Peace United Church Women of Peace gave us fifty dollars for the Activity Day. I would entertain a motion to accept those donations.
Motion by Chuck.
I'll second.
Second by Lori. Any discussions? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next thing on the list, what we said we were going to do every meeting, go over our different policies that we have in place. So you have been given the one hundred series. I'm hoping that you all took a note and looked through those. Any questions on any of them? Any revisions that you seem to think we should maybe look at closer? Take a look quick.
When was the mission statement done? We're supposed to review that every two years.
I always say the last time we did is when we did the strategic plan, which was last year, I believe. But yes, that should be reviewed often.
What I would point out is again, the Series One Hundred is pretty interesting, but it's also very broad in scope and talking about who you are as a board and those kinds of things. The complaint procedure, obviously, is a part of it, it's a key part. I think Tom and Jeremiah and Lori, you know, we talked extensively about that. Their training has been heavy on the complaint issues because that's common. And so it's a very big part of your job and those kinds of things. And it's important by policy to make sure that we preserve relationships both inside and outside the district. And so anyway, so that was, that was an interesting part of Policy Series One Hundred. And then also, as you bring up, Tom, the mission statement, what we'll do then is we'll insert that when we go back. So we'll post it on the website. We'll have that in there as correction, yep.
And I would entertain a motion to accept those board policy, Series One Hundred.
I move to accept the board policy.
I'd second it.
Jeremiah. Do we have any discussion on that? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The school year calendar for twenty-five, twenty-six. Mr. Frock, you want to give us a little history on that?
Sure, if I can. The, it's interesting to note the work, the advanced work that you folks do relative to getting calendars out there for succeeding years, which is a good thing. It just gives you a chance to eyeball and think about, think about things. And this is, this is one that's been, a calendar model that's been out there for a while. Just some highlights, and I think that's kind of what we want you to do tonight is just kind of be thinking about if you'd like to do something differently and we obviously have time. We have a couple of months to work on what we could do for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. One of the interesting pieces about, one of the interesting pieces about the twenty-five, twenty-six school year is that school, as it relates to the statutory mandate around the post-Labor Day start, is the earliest it can possibly be. Meaning that the first day of school in a traditional sense would be on Tuesday, the second of September. So what that does, the beauty of that is it, you know, as you look at semesters, it does give you some additional days in that first semester to work with. So that's a nice thing. The other, then the other marking point as you take a look at school becomes, you know, when is the NEA or fall break and then Thanksgiving? But then you look at Christmas and that's going to be something for you to think about going forward is what you want to do with that holiday break in December. When you can take a look at the month of December, the twenty-second of December, the twenty-third of December. And do we run into the same type of situation that we had this year? Does this year we have one day bringing the kids back? And obviously, we've made that change. But does this, does two days make things different or does it make it the same? So the other factor about that would be that if the district, if the board, which, you know, the board owns the calendar, so to speak, would not have school on December twenty-second and twenty-third, there would be a full two weeks of a holiday break, which is unique. In other words, you gain it on the front end in September, which will allow for maybe a full two-week break. Just some thoughts if you want to do that. Anyway, yeah.
So they don't have school on the second?
I was going to ask that too, Lori, because as I'm reading this here, it says no school on twenty-second, thirty-first, and no school on first.
Right.
Right. So that would be the decision you have to make because it works, walks us back to what happened this year. Are we going to bring kids back on the second for one day?
On a Friday.
On a Friday. Yep. We had a Monday this year and next year we have a Friday. So I don't, you know, that's going to have to be something to work through. You know, I don't know how that'd go over.
When can we finalize this calendar?
You folks, from what I understand, have been fairly aggressive in having calendars done and, you know, and prepared and that kind of thing. I, you know, it varies from district to district, you know. What does your public expect of you relative, so they want it, do you want it done? You can go, it's probably a good idea to have it done in April at the latest. That's just what I've been accustomed to. But you certainly have done, you know, expedient work here and done it early. So I don't know. There's a lot of things in here that are, that are worthy of conversation, you know. Matter of fact, in meeting with the EEA on some things, there were three different calendars that I think we'll bring to you, or excuse me, to the staff to look at and how we can vary. What is the concept of potentially trying to be done by Memorial Day? Is that a good idea? I, you know, I know you folks go beyond Memorial Day, which is difficult. And is that something you want to continue to do? Or I know how, what my feelings are about going beyond Memorial Day. It's hard. And so, and I know you have a big, you have a big contract with the teachers in that regard. So there's a lot to work through here. Yeah. There's also a very new thought out there that state law allows you to, state law allows you to start school before Labor Day if you have a project, a building project that exceeds four hundred thousand dollars.
Which we would have this year.
Yep, you would have. So that, that's another tool that you could use to maybe help meet that goal. Just some thoughts, that there's a lot there to navigate here in the next few months. Lots of them, okay?
So we don't have to act on it this evening?
No. That was primarily discussion. I, you discuss.
We should probably have a discussion on that.
Maybe we'll, we're going to put some things out and get some feedback when it's down.
Yeah. I would think that would be it.
All right, we do, we didn't make, we weren't finished last, at the organizational meeting. Discovered that there is another committee that we should have board representation on. It is the District Wellness Committee. So don't all jump up and down.
What does that one entail? It's like a newer one.
Sherri, can you give us a couple of words on?
So we have, we have a policy, or I mean, we have to have a wellness committee. It's easy to do if you can get on a meeting at seven-thirty in the morning. We need it for food service. And that committee kind of works with like some of our food service mandates. And then we also talk about, we belong to a health source solutions through Source Wealth that has, we have some added benefits to our policy where we give incentives to the staff to help them be well. It kind of encompasses all of that. So you might talk about some food service stuff where, you know, like farm-to-table or something like that. Elizabeth Kio is on it. She works with the Center Care. Public health kind of gets involved with it too. So it's kind of a whole group effort to fill a whole bunch of boxes.
I couldn't be on it.
But Lori wants a light to have it.
I couldn't be on it.
There's two right here. There you go. How often and where do they meet?
Just on Zoom.
Zoom. I don't have to go anywhere, you don't have to work.
Every once in a while, we might, every once in a while, we might meet in-house. But go on the last couple of years while after COVID, we've kind of kept it Zoom. Just because that's easier too for folks to jump on when they can.
Thank you, Chris, for your stuff.
Yeah, just because I work there, doesn't mean I want to be on every committee involved.
Okay, we appreciate you volunteering. We probably should as we motioned all the other committee assignments. So I would entertain a motion that Jeremiah and Lori would be on the Wellness Committee.
So moved.
Tom.
I'll second.
And Chuck.
Thanks, guys.
Any discussion on that? Any discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Doug. Okay, then we, next we have the handbook, all nicely highlighted. I'm sure you all read it over very carefully. And the cell phone policy, which we have to have by law, correct, Mr. Frock?
Well, here's, let's start with the changes up there. You saw, as you see that are highlighted, y'all, those are, I go to my association meetings about four times a year, then to the conferences. And this, these things change sometimes mid-year and they recommend that you make these changes. Obviously to keep us legal on the legal end of it, so I would change that immediately. So tomorrow I'd notify parents or parents who are that these changes. They're nothing major. You've made like towards the end, the clarification, something made pretty close. You've already made that change as of July, we're saying more clarification. We're already having, we're already having meetings with parents. I've had my meetings, you know, and I've got a coffee with the principal again tomorrow, once a month, and these things are not coming up. But we always want to provide that clarification to families. But the changes in there are recommended by Secondary School Principals Association. So that would be that portion of it. The second one is cell phone. This is just speaking with Tammy and Mr. Frock on this. I've given this out to staff and as former staff survey as well as parents and students along with, and you saw that in there, where surrounding school districts have at current time enacted along with the Secondary School Principals Toolkit. This is just information from you. What I'm focusing on at my end, I don't want Tammy speaking here under, I've already been talking about this today. Bring it to the staff and have the staff give you a recommendation, what they would like to see from their end. And that would aim for that in February. This will be something that I'll be bringing to my leadership committee next week to start chewing on that along with introducing, obviously, a little bit deeper with the staff the next day. And then by February, have a recommendation to you as a board to say, this is what we as a building recommend. So you have something a little bit more finite than we're not. March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five is what, if my state law, we need to have something. We did check into the fact, can we hold that off till fall? Yes, we can. So that is something you could pass in March or February board meeting. And then we're not going to, into power until this very next year. So it's something to look, to look at with that cell phone currently. We'll need the agreement or disagreement with the changes to the handbook policy. Now, I would do need to make this time.
Anyone have any further questions about the handbook? And I would entertain a motion.
I move to accept the changes as presented.
Okay.
I'll second.
Lori. Any further discussion?
Yeah, one more question. When it says confiscate in here, do you mean physically like remove the, so if a student's unwilling to give up their cellphone, how are you going to confiscate it?
There is no, there's no way to do that. I mean, we're not going to physically grab it from the student. Even at that point, we'd be calling parents and, you know, it becomes that type of, but the, really, there's no, we're all dealing with it in every school district. There is no quick, you know, amends to it right now. We're all trying to figure out what works best for each guest right now.
Right. I guess my, one concern was if you're trying to take a student's cellphone, it happens to break or bust or fall or something like that, then we're going to be liable for that. Just cell phones can be expensive, so.
Now we'll listen to bigger discussion because any time we take it into our hands, we're not responsible for it.
Right.
And I'm very concerned with my staff putting themselves in that position, I'll be honest with you. Because it's not fair to them that they're trying to teach at the same time, you have a cellphone issue and then you take it from them, that puts them in a compromised position. I don't like to see that compared to the staff. So that is a discussion point. And different schools are doing different, so absolutely.
But just to be clear, Jeremiah, that's the cell phone policy. What we are approving now is a handbook.
Right, I, I just, I'm generally.
Yeah, just to be clear.
And if you, if any of you have questions on that or suggestions or anything, I give you, I think I put four different districts in there. You want more, you want some, just email me, let me know. I'd be happy to find that information out. So by no means is that the perfect report there. So if you do see something that you want, let me know.
Okay, then we had a motion and a second. Okay, then we had a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the handbook or the handbook policy? Any more discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Man, Joe, are you, are you gonna move on from the cell phone policy issue?
I believe so, as long as he's coming back with the survey stuff for us.
Um, the other piece to that, last at the reorganization meeting, I think the board approved uh, board policy five twenty-four, which was the cell phone policy, uh, internet acceptable use policy. And and that that has been integrated, cell phone policy is gonna be integrated into that policy. Okay, so um, your, your person, Kersh Schneiderwin, was at our meeting last week. And and I thought we would have that. They are getting now um, the last legal run on a new five twenty-four, which would address uh, cell phone policy and and obviously the permissive uh, language, depending upon what you decide with on at the February board meeting. So that five twenty-four they had said was supposed to be here, I thought it'd be here today, but it didn't come. So it's, it's out there. The model policy, which like I said, we'd probably integrate um, our work into that policy for you. So that's just as an aside.
Okay, so in February, we'll deal with it. Yeah. Um, I believe we are on the computer at least. Would you want to speak with you or with Mitchell?
He could probably articulate it better for, for sure, so.
I have the numbers in front of me.
Oh, okay, well, um, anyway, I, I think I probably put into uh, uh, I probably put into the packet. And of course, we had, we had discussed, it comes with a due pass recommendation from the finance committee. The idea that uh, we would enter into a lease now to uh, pick up laptops for staff, outfit a high school computer lab, and then add some additional docking stations. Um, and in light of the fact that we now are looking at tariffs coming from various different countries, particularly those of uh, that are specialized in the technology side of our world, that maybe we might do that right now. And and so as opposed to waiting and then July one billing and that kind of thing. So um, we, we looked things over. We did have a lease that came off um, last year, uh, off the, of the district rolls. So um, anyway, that's, that's kind of it. Like I said, we took it to finance, had a finance committee, had a conversation there, looked things over. And again, it comes with a due pass recommendation before board. I, I certainly yield to uh, Mitchell if he had any other supportive information.
Um, I just know that this is less than when we did it four years ago. This is actually about a hundred dollars less per computer, which is pretty substantial, impacting a hundred and uh, I used about a hundred and eighteen, a hundred and twenty computers. So it's, and credit quality. So in our staff, here's the following part, they use them every day. It's, that's how they do everything, so. Any questions? Um, we want to even, if, if you pass it, we want to get it rolling. I'd like to order them tomorrow and we're hoping to eat them out by the end of March is the plan.
So these are the computers that they use, they stay in the classroom?
Well, the teacher laptops, they use them for everything, I believe, and they.
Or they, they're, they take them back and forth with them, okay.
They live with them, yes, right, yep. Plus all the office staff, everybody, everybody.
Okay. Okay, so they're not used by kids at all?
No, this is the teachers. This is teachers, yep.
It'll be a combination of desktops and not laptops then, if you're gonna open it.
The desktops, yeah, so the students will use the desktops in the lab. And it's for the, the CAD, before we're getting more.
Okay. How many desktops are we looking at?
Thirty-two, I believe. And we recycle the, we take the computer lab that we're using in CAD now. We put that in the media center and they use that for our class. Um, so we just keep rotating to make the best use of. Because they need pretty, uh, you know, high-end computers or like CAD stuff. And then as they age, then we just move them down. So we used to have, I don't know, eight, eight or nine computer labs in the district without two. It's gonna be a problem, so, which is, which is huge.
We need an approval. We had to pay the motion.
I'd make the motion to, you know, purchase between a hundred and eighteen, a hundred and twenty PCs and move forward with a lease with HP.
Motion by Jeremiah? Chuck, the second. Is there any discussion?
This would be orders.
Yep.
Orders, yep. Any further?
Order with a dollar by a.
I see that.
Right there, yep, yep.
Any further discussion on that? Any further discussion? And I will call the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're down to the last item on the agenda. And we have discussion and possible action regarding superintendent, interim superintendent employment.
Do we have a plan that's in place or ideas on how this is gonna go?
This is what we're doing right now. I would entertain a motion if somebody wants to. About what they would like to do with superintendent Ludwixson, an interim superintendent.
Are we able to have a discussion on this?
Yep, you make the motion, we'll discuss, okay?
I guess I'd make the motion to discuss it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion you want to do?
Just to discuss what we're going to do, okay. Has there been any recommendations from the attorney on how we should proceed?
Well, she says we have several options. I'm looking for it.
Couldn't we have her talk to us about it?
I believe she cannot right now.
I could throw out basically kind of what the substantive issues are, I think we need to probably look at, if that helps.
I think that would help.
Um, so my understanding is.
Do you want to introduce yourself first, everybody?
How is it you don't know me? Um, no, I'm.
Well, they might not.
No, excuse me. I'm Jennifer Early and I have a cold. Um, I am an attorney with Rattler Rossetti and Ronnie, and our firm was added as counsel in, in December and asked to just look or help, guide you through um, your superintendent options and, and choices. And where you stand right now is that you currently have a superintendent in place that has a contract, a three-year contract that expires as of June thirty, two thousand and twenty-five. There was a motion back on um, October, I don't have it in front of me, to basically decide not to renew the contract of Mr. Ludwixson. Um, but basically with the understanding that there is a new board coming on and that's, that would be revisited after the new board is here. The current status is that you have no superintendent, permanent superintendent as of July one, two thousand and twenty-five. It's January, um, at the end of January. And usually there is a process, takes some time to get a superintendent in place. So it's time to start thinking about what you want to do with your superintendent position. Um, and there's always options as to what your choices are. One, you have a current superintendent and the question is whether you want to move forward and renew. That's still on the table, something you could decide that that's something you want to discuss and you want to look forward and have that, excuse me, discussion with Mr. Ludwixson as to whether or not he is interested in that, so that's option one. Um, your second option is that you stay with the non-renewal determination and decide to basically move forward with a superintendent search. Um, and that's basically however you want to decide to do that search. You could decide to get a consultant to assist you with that. If you've got your own process in place, you could do that. You may have a committee that you're gonna defer to and have them put a process in place for you. But if you're going to do a search, you need to be moving on that very quickly and get that process in place because there are limited numbers of superintendents that are out there and available and looking for, and they're looking for positions right now. So now is the time to hire and to be starting that process. So I think those are kind of the two, as you're looking for the permanent superintendent position. It's question one, are you going to look at renewing Mr. Ludwixson's contract? And if you are, what would the term be or what would direction would you like to put forward to a committee or uh, someone to move forward with addressing that issue? Um, and if that is not the direction you want to go, um, you want to start the superintendent process and, and kind of get that developed as to where you want to be. I think those are basically the two choices to go with. I don't know if there's a third that's sitting out there, but those that I would say were the primary choices. Um, and then that issue as to what you want to do, that's your decision as a group. Um, so I don't know if that's answers your questions as to what your options are and what to do with them, just have a view.
We'll let that sink in for a little bit. Does anyone have a comment?
I don't. Um, I could see us opening it up and allowing or inviting Mr. Ludwixson to apply. And you go through and do the interviews, what we've done in the past, and um, choose a superintendent for that and see if the best candidate for us, and that's what we would do. Um, I think that would be a wise choice, considering how everything is going.
That's what I would suggest we do. However, we do have a superintendent hired. So we have to figure what we can clean down for you to move.
At this time, I believe that the feedback that I've gotten from a majority, a majority of the feedback I've gotten by vast, vast majority is that staff, um, a majority of them, and I'm not by any means going to speak for all of the staff, but a majority of them and a majority of the community by leaps and bounds want Daniel reinstated. Um, and I believe that's the way we proceed it for the time being. And begin negotiating a contract offer with him as soon as we can proceed for possibly the next year and determine where we go from there. I think we're a little late in the game to jump into a superintendent race when you've got neighboring districts that are already in that race.
You can look at that the other way too, though.
If there's um, openings, there's like seventeen openings in the state. So, I don't know, he's not a job.
I'm not saying he's not a job.
And with the way things went, I feel like I'm not gonna be exposed to a litigious situation. Um, there's reasons why people are um, not renewed or put on special assignment. And as a board, we have responsibility, we have that responsibility. And when that responsibility fails, we make that person back and something happens, we're liable for it.
We are.
Um, it happened in the cities, they are currently under a lawsuit that's gorgeous because they did not take care of their due diligence with things that went on.
Point of order, uh, in Roberts rules, it says that after one board member speaks, every other board member has to have an opportunity to speak before the floor returns to that person.
All right, then.
We were just at a, uh, meeting that said boards don't necessarily follow Roberts rules or orders, superboards do not necessarily follow that.
But they should.
I was at the same conference where they said we are supposed to be following Roberts rule order to maintain order of the meeting.
I think that difference is very significant.
All right.
So I spoke first. And my suggestion was that we search for candidates for interim search.
We got it, Tanya, we got it.
But I'm going to say it because three more people chimed in, four more people, five more people chimed in. We would do a superintendent search and, and whoever wants to apply could apply and we'll take the best candidate moving forward. Right now, I feel like we have an interim that is doing an exceptional job. And um, has anybody considered that?
All right, somebody else should speak. If not, I would entertain a motion.
I, 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 I like the, like Tom's idea. It seems like there's a large majority in the public.
Who's the majority, Chuck? Who's the majority?
Tanya.
No, who's the majority?
No. Chuck has the floor.
I like Tom's idea.
Is there another board member that would like to make comment?
I went back for about the last year looking at different board members' agendas, reviewing information. And I'm kind of with Tom and, you know, going with him and just because it is so late in the year to do a superintendent or anything with it, you know, we need to give it maybe a little bit more time.
Jeremiah.
When you say a little bit more time, do you mean more time to?
Like give, you know, do a year, see what happens in that year.
Okay.
That gives us, to figure out what we're gonna do in the future. You know, if we're gonna renew, if we're, you know, going in a different direction, at least it gives us some kind of base to, base everything on.
So I think most of us ran with the idea of bringing back Dan. Um, I'm included in that, so I think the decision would be to bring back Dan. Um, but in order to bring back Dan, I think that we need to have a plan in place. We need to uh, kind of have an idea of what Dan is gonna do. We also need to have an idea of what Doug is gonna do, who is the superintendent. It can't just be, um, they need to play nice in the sandbox. The roles need to be laid out. Um, and, and I think that would be our idea moving forward, if that's what the board wants to do.
So I have a couple of questions. Um, Mr. Frock, do you have any idea when schools typically put out searches for superintendents? Is it around January is when you start?
Typically, January, yep, you start the season is in.
So. When you guys keep saying we're late into the game, we're not. It's, it's still January, so we, if we put that out, it would still be a really great time for us to do that. So can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Yeah. Is it normal to bring back a person who was put on special assignment and voted for another, and is that typical of school boards to bring that person back?
I think you're kind of asking me to get to the subject of whether you want to have them back or not. There's a lot of considerations that go into it. Um, and different schools are gonna make different decisions. And you've got a different board than you've had before when that initial decision is made, it's.
Right.
So there's a lot of things that could go into it. Um, and it all depends on the reason why the person is out. So a lot of that is what triggers that and there'd be reasons why people come back, reasons why people stay out.
I think it would be a good idea to open it up, let everyone apply and choose the best candidate. We have the time to do that. And if Mr. Ludvigsen is the best candidate, then we hire him back. But if he's not the best candidate, then we take the best candidate for our district because that's our job is to have the best person in this spot for our district. That's what we're responsible for doing. Making sure we have the best person here for our district.
And I would say again that five of us ran on a campaign and we think we were voted in by a lot of folks and perhaps we need to listen to those folks because they are the ones that did the voting. So my vote would be to bring Daniel back and the motion would be to include immediately to talk about the conditions thereof and to um decide what contract would be and what duties would befall.
How long, Linda? When you say this, do we begin that discussion immediately after we take a vote on whether or not we're going to bring Daniel back? Which I think it's fairly clear all the majority of us are gonna vote in that matter. Do we begin that tonight or do we?
I would say immediately, first thing tomorrow morning, for sure. Um, we decide what the new contract would be, what duties would be and how it would affect Mr. Frock. Um, and whatever legal decides that we should need to do and what we have to do to cover all of that kind of business and it should include negotiations for next year's contract. We need to finish out this school year and then next year's contract for sure.
Well, I will make the motion to bring Mr. Ludvigsen back as our superintendent. Um, we'll be beginning discussions tomorrow morning and I believe beginning tomorrow, he should be allowed to be in the building and be working as we're paying and mass taxpayers have indicated widely to me, they want results for what they're paying.
Oh, be- be- before we vote here, I mean, so I think I want Daniel back just as much as anybody else, but I think that timeline is really rushed, like, I think we need to work with legal to develop a plan and a stage strategy of bring, if bringing back Daniel is whatever he wants. It can't just be he's back tomorrow and back on the job like we need to have.
And I'm not saying he's fully back on the job tomorrow.
But what Linda.
Sorry for speaking outboard.
No, you're fine. But what you've described and what Linda described are two different things. Like, this needs to be clear and concise. And I think working with legal would be the best option to do that. It can't just be us sitting up here right now saying, oh, he's back tomorrow and not have a a structured plan in place.
But we can't do that without the first step. And that's cleaning the job.
Oh, I get.
We didn't, we didn't have any plan. It would went the other way.
Right, but that's not a good argument because be- because uh because then we're just flipping it, we're now the board that we all rallied against. Like, we need to be equitable equitable in this. Just because you have the numbers doesn't mean you always just force your way through it. We need to be appropriate in how we approach this.
Right.
And if I can clarify, I was not meaning that he would be fully back in the job tomorrow, but he should have access to the building um and be able to produce something for what the taxpayers are getting.
Okay, and if that's the way.
And we need to develop that strategy and we need to begin that tomorrow.
Then if that takes a special meeting in the next week or so, so be it.
Then we, yeah, then we can have that special meeting, but to discuss it today and then vote on it today, I think would be irresponsible. Especially since we can't have this open discussion now with legal. Um, just because everybody's here. I mean, there are a lot of key things that are in place here that need to be worked out.
But we need to start the law.
I I understand that.
So right now there is a motion on the floor.
Point of order, what's the motion? To bring
Go ahead.
To bring Daniel back into the buildings tomorrow and to begin the process with legal on how to fully reinstate him as our superintendent.
Um, I guess, do you have, you have to have a second for any sort of session.
So we need a second.
I'll second it.
Now we can have further discussion.
Uh, legal, do you guys have a kind of an outline or a projected idea of how we are going to bring Daniel back? Or is it something we can?
Well, um, it's a bit unique. So I would say that there need to be people that understand what's currently going on in the school district. The the tasks and issues at hand that need to happen. Um, you've got logistics as to where your superintendents are gonna be placed. Um, you've got to figure out what the superintendent's duties are and who's going to have those areas of duties. Are we gonna split them up um between you're gonna do personnel, you're gonna do students, or we're gonna split those? It's almost like a superintendent assistant superintendent type of management who is going to have authority over the superintendent in directing, supervising, um, all of that. I mean, do they, you know, is it one reporting to the other? Are they, you know, making joint decisions? How do you want to work that process? I mean, there aren't very many school districts out there that have two superintendents at once at one point in time. Um, I don't know of any. Um, but you know, there's the, there is the superintendent assistant superintendent model that we know that, you know, there's kind of a division of some of those duties to some degree, but that doesn't necessarily mean that's how you have to do it. Um, you know, we have principals of buildings and they kind of share some very similar types of duties, even though they're different grade levels, but again, that's a very different bird. Um, so I think you gotta, it's gonna take a bit and I think maybe you need a group, a working group, perhaps I would suggest, or committee or something to go through and say, these are the things that we need to figure out with um having a a nice flow or a good kind of reintegration type of process where it's not just you know, coming in tomorrow and you've got nothing to do type of thing. I think that you certainly can start with small things and and try to work on getting some of those, you know, bring everyone together with what are those ideas, what are those tasks, what are those duties, how are we gonna divide these things? What are the things we need to consider? And I think you need to have the, I think you need to have Mr. Frock and Mr. Ludvigsen certainly involved in those discussions too because it's their jobs and their duties and they know what these things are. So I think those are, you know, key players. Your administrators know what's going on in the buildings. So it might be that you need to ask some of those people those questions because it's their lives it's gonna affect. So, um, as you're planning that, I think it's just how is that all gonna work?
I mean, we could have this all done by next week, right?
Exactly. You know, I think if we start right now, we'll be running a meeting on tomorrow.
I'll go, I'll go ahead, call it six months and we'll decide.
I I I will be honest with you, I have not seen this happen before. Um, there is no roadmap or guide necessarily out there. I am just basically throwing out some suggestions as to things that might make it easier to have, you know, reintegration that is a little smoother in transition or something that would be smoother and that's the direction the board is looking to go. But those types of things are things that the board's gonna need to work through.
It's a good thing Chuck went to those AI classes, so we can have chat GPT on some.
Yeah, I'm sure that if you just Google AI, it'll tell you exactly what you need to do.
Yeah.
But I would break it down into those, you know, I I think you need to find out what's going on and what needs to be done in the chunks and how you're gonna decide those pieces.
What part does Mr. Frock play in this? Whether he chooses to do or not do?
Well, Mr. Frock is the interim superintendent. He's currently been running the school district and he is aware. You just heard his presentation. He's very informed. He knows what's going on with the district. He has all of his information and knowledge as to how things have been handled and what's going on and I don't think, I think it'd be very difficult to transition any duties without knowing exactly what makes it.
We can do that, yes.
Yeah.
We're that.
And um, I'm, you know, there's the other, you know, you I'm sorry, can I answer your question? I don't want to go past that.
He has the option to write off in the sunset, right? I think it's rare.
I I think that there, I think under his contract, if there's a mutual termination, parties could decide to do that. Or, you know, he he has a contract that at a minimum is through June thirty of two thousand twenty five, if I'm correct. And we do, he has pay and benefits to them. So his services under the terms of the contract are set through that time period. Um, if the parties decide you want to modify the terms of that contract, you can, but you know, no party is obligated to.
Any further discussion?
I feel that it would not be fair to our staff, our our principals, um, Mr. Frock or Mr. Ludvigsen to throw them all back in tomorrow morning and have the staff saying, well, I don't know who my boss is and making it really difficult without having these things worked out first. So I think there there should be some decisions made first for everyone's sake so that it's clear to everyone what's going on when it happens.
For the time being, I'm sorry, please step on me. Um, for the time being, Mr. Frock will still be in charge. He is still acting superintendent until we get a plan in place.
So really you're just saying you want to allow Daniel back on campus?
Yes.
Have access to his email and keys again.
Email and files and so he can catch up with what he's missed.
And then. Then with the idea then that we would have to form a committee and moving forward, develop the plan and agenda.
Yeah.
Would that be something like the negotiations committee would be?
The executive committee or negotiations. Negotiations would probably talk about contract for next year. But the executive committee probably should be that group and that is three of us. Any more discussion? Any more discussion? Any more discussion? And I would call the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Name.
Broke call bold. Jeremiah?
Yes.
Chuck?
Lisa?
No.
Lori?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tanya?
No.
Come.
Yes.
I believe the ayes have it. And you need names, I have them here. Motion carries. And I think the next order of business and that is the end of the agenda, but one quick um, executive committee should probably get together a week tomorrow morning or as soon thereafter and we will give Ms. Jennifer a call over there to see what she can help us with. Thank you, reading adjourned. Thank you all.